If everyone would please take their seats, if there's a seat for you, so we can get started. Okay. Welcome to the September 26, 2023 City Council meeting. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Missions, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just want to ask you to join us tonight. There's a lot of things we're going to be deliberating, Lord, and we've got a lot of people in here watching us, Lord. And we just ask that people's voices are heard, Lord, and we ask that you give us your wisdom, Lord, as we navigate these challenges facing our city, Lord, where we're balancing the needs of our individuals, families, and businesses that make up this great Lynchburg. Lord, I also ask that you keep the evil spirits of deception out of this room, Lord, and you allow us to dress these things with objectivity and make the best decisions that we know how to do, Lord. And, Lord, most of all, I want to thank you for sending our Lord and Savior, your Son, Jesus Christ, to this earth to die and to be resurrected so that we all can spend eternal life with you one day. It is in your name I pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon?
I've been reading and reading. I got through the year 2023. I hate keeping assholes. Yeah, sure. So I thought I could read them all, but I wasn't so much fun reading them.
Okay. So tonight, we have several recognitions. We are going to start with our Women in Machining Program graduates. Tonight, we are recognizing four graduates of the Women in Machining Program. These graduates completed a 12-week career training program at VectorSpace with the goal of helping women from underserved communities achieve employment in the machinist field, a cornerstone of Lynchburg's economy. Each participant has spent approximately 70 hours learning technical machining skills, including the operation of manual mills and lathes, benchwork, material properties, measurement, and more. Additionally, each one of these women has completed the Virginia Career Work Skills USA curriculum, earning a certificate of completion in this career readiness program. Next, these women will continue their education at CBCC, where they have already earned course credits, or apply directly for employment with one of our eight employment partners. This program was created by VectorSpace in 2019, and funding was provided by the City of Lynchburg via a workforce program-specific TANF grant. I would like to invite Adam and Elise Spatirelli up, along with the program graduates, Corey Randolph, Demi McLaughlin, Vanessa Rucker, and, I don't want to mess this one up, Ekija Rose, to receive your certificates and take a photo. Okay, our next recognition, as you may be able to see, we have the University of Lynchburg baseball team, NCAA Division III 2023 national champions here. We are honored to celebrate the success of our local collegiate athletes who have excelled in their postseason tournaments. The University of Lynchburg's baseball team won the NCAA Division III 2023 national championship, their first national championship in program history, with a 7-6 victory over John Hobson's University this past summer. They are the first Old Dominion Athletic Conference team and Division III school from Virginia to win a national championship in baseball. I would like to invite head coach Travis Beasley and assistant coach Orskar Garcia and Mike Solbach, if he's here, up to receive the team's recognition certificates and the team up front to take a photo.
Yeah, I think we need to stand up there mighty tall. Stand up and get behind them. All right. Look at Shaquille first. Look at Shaquille first. Here we go. One, two, three. Yes, yes. There we go. Don't text it to yourself, hey? Congratulations, guys. Go win it again. Go win it again. All right.
Okay, so we allowed the clapping for those reasons, but from now on, we got to be quiet. But thank you so much. That was worth celebrating, for sure. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Consideration of approving the minutes for the 2022 City Council meetings, consideration of approving the minutes for the 2023 City Council meetings, and consideration of adopting resolutions are 23073, amending the fiscal year 2024 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating $57,200 for the purchase of one LifePak 15 monitor defibrillator and one Lucas Two Chests compression system. Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Madam Mayor, I move Consent Agenda Item Number Three.
You want to move it?
For approval. Just number three.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Oh, we can just go ahead and vote?
Madam Mayor, this would be explicitly for the members of council who were present at the time, so this should be an item where only four members are voting.
That's right. So only the council members who were present in 2022 can vote.
Yep.
Yes, Councilwoman Dolan?
Okay, also, can you remove the April 4, 2023 council meetings, because I was not, I was absent.
So we're only voting on, I think, three. Hopefully, we can pull out three, four until next time, which, if you don't mind me asking, as I was reading, and I got carried away reading every word of 2022, and I'm still, if we could delay one more meeting for 2023, if that would be okay, till next meeting.
So let's go ahead and vote on 2022, and the new council members will abstain from this vote. Go ahead and vote.
Do we need to give you a statement or intentions in the record?
I believe Vice Mayor Feraldi captured it.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're voting on 2022.
Just 2022.
All right, go ahead. The motion passes 4-0, abstaining.
Okay, great. So Councilman Hugoson has asked that we delay approving the minutes from 2023, one more meeting? Do we have a consensus that we would move to until the October 10 meeting? Is that okay with everyone?
Thank you all.
Okay, go ahead. So now we will, do I have a motion to approve item number five?
Salute.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead and vote then.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearing, Public Comment, and General Business. The first section is Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent?
No.
Oh, we've already done it.
Can we?
I'm sorry, y'all. Moving on. We're moving on to the public hearing, because we just did the Consent Agenda. We're just making sure you're paying attention. This is local government, kids. It's very important. Okay? All right. Yes. Yes.
We do have one of our little citizens here tonight for public comment, Adeline Robertson. She's number 18 on the agenda. If it pleases council, can we move her up, since it's school night, to the first public comment?
How much motion do you have?
I don't think we need a motion. We can just consent to that. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, so moving Adeline to number one.
To the top of public comment.
Okay. Done. Got it. All right. Public hearing. The next section is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each person, each speaker, shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submission of the program year 2022, fiscal year 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Gabriel Bateman. Gabrielle, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Feraldi, and members of City Council. Tonight, City Council is conducting a public hearing to receive comments regarding the program year 2022, fiscal year 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPR, for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and home programs, and to approve a resolution for the submittal of the report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. A copy of this report has been provided to you, and I will provide a overview of some of the accomplishments made during this fiscal year in the following PowerPoint. For fiscal year 2023, the following resources were made available: $714,845 in CDBG funds, $421,034 in home funds, and $198,181 in CDBG CARES Act, or CDBGCV funds. These available resources include fiscal year 2023 entitlement, reprogram, and program income funds for the CDBG and home programs. The CDBGCV funds were allocated in fiscal year 2020. In fiscal year 2023, the following amounts were expended, as recorded in HUD's data system and prior year's allocations: $253,326 in CDBG funds, $1241,248 in home funds, and $57,469 in CDBGCV funds. Moving on to accomplishments. The Jefferson Park improvements design continued for the construction of the Court Plaza improvements, site furnishings, lighting, stormwater management, and landscaping. These items are planned to be constructed and completed in fiscal year 2024. $90,915 of CDBG funds were expended during fiscal year 2023 for this project. As part of the Timbridge Hill Overlook Project, Timbridge Hill Trail was relocated. This trail serves as a trailhead to the Kemper Train Section Trail located in Blackwater Creek Natural Area. In addition, an overlook of the trail in the natural area was installed. $286,015 in CDBG funds were expended in conjunction with Water Resources capital funds for this project, with the total cost coming to $1682,890. Total of $26,900 in home funds was expended by Greater Lynchburg Habitat for Humanity to provide down payment assistance and gap financing assistance to two households. In addition, Habitat for Humanity expended $632,788 in home funds to complete the infrastructure construction of the Knott Street Development Project, where they plan to construct nine affordable housing units starting in fiscal year 2024. Through the Central Virginia Continuum of Care's Coordinated Homeless Intake and Access Program, there were 6,020 calls from people seeking homeless services in the 2023 fiscal year. 256 households were referred for homeless prevention services. 115 households were referred to emergency shelters. 53 households were referred to domestic violence services, and 217 households were referred to street outreach services. $65,000 in CDBG funds were expended for this activity. The public comment period for the CAPR began on September 9, 2023, and ends with tonight's public hearing. At this time, city staff has not received any public comments prior to the public hearing. At the conclusion of this public hearing and approval by City Council, city staff will incorporate any comments received into the report and submit the CAPR to HUD. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Any calls from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Okay? Any discussion? Is Councilwoman Dolan? Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Wilder, go ahead.
I serve with a CDAC committee, and the committee is made up of certain citizens from the different wards in our community that have a say in how those funds are spent. So I want to commend the committee members who are on that committee, who have a voice, where certain citizens in our committee have a voice for those funds. Those funds go to homelessness, go to Habitat, go to helping persons with down payment assistance, and various other things in housing and various other areas to help persons who might, who are somewhat underprivileged, but get them to another level where they can be of high homeownership, or homelessness, get them to a place of living. So I'm so thankful for the funds from CDBG and for the community members who are part of that committee to make those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Taylor, did you have anything to say?
No.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Dolan?
Yeah, I just want to say I serve on two boards in connection with this report, Minkegg and the Lynchburg Housing Redevelopment Authority Board, and I can say that I can objectively vote on this, because I don't receive any benefit from it.
Any comments or questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Great. Okay. Consideration of introducing two resolutions approving the fiscal year 2023 fourth quarter and fiscal year 2024 first quarter adjustments. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Donowitz.
Thank you. This item was brought to the last meeting regarding adjustments to be made to the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2023 and the first quarter of fiscal year 2024. The detail is included in the agenda summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Any calls from citizens?
There are none.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Do I have a motion?
I have someone.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Councilwoman Dolan?
No, nothing to add.
Dr. Wilder?
No additional comments, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's vote.
The motion passes 6-1.
All right. Consideration of adopting a resolution granting a non-exclusive limited revocable license to Clancy D. Wilson to permit encroachments at 1200 Rivermont Avenue. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Clay Simmons. Mr. Simmons not here?
Madam Mayor, I can probably assist.
Okay. Go ahead.
As City Council can see from its packet, what's before it is a resolution that grants a non-exclusive limited revocable license to Clancy D. Wilson, who's a resident here in the city. So where this license, oh, here, here's Mr. Simmons now.
Sorry?
Mr. Simmons, you're up.
My coffee's lost. They weren't getting that real fast.
Again, sorry about that, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Here to talk about a proposed lease agreement between Clancy Wilson, who has owned the house and property located at 1106 Cabell Street since about December of 1989. When he bought the property, he was under the presumption that he owned all the way to the next occupied parcel. Unfortunately, it turns out that that was actually later to be a city property. He took steps under that presumption to start improving the property. So he put in an above-ground pool, put in a driveway, and put in a concrete pad, which created encroachments on the city parcel. When we found out about it, this is the encroachment area, when we found out about it, went and spoke to him, and it was clear he had no idea, you know, it wasn't anything that was done intentionally. In looking at this, it causes no hardship to the city. It's not property that we're ever likely to use, so we were under, really, staff was supportive of going on ahead and allowing him to leave the encroachments in place. The cleanest way to do that was through a license agreement. So click through some other photos here real quick. That's a site survey. This is some ground view photos just of the encroachments. And there's the pool. This item had come up previously, the July 11 Physical Development Committee meeting, and with that, that's really all we've got.
Great, thank you so much. We'll call you back if we have any questions. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Any calls from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Councilman Hugoson?
Thank you. Clay, maybe you, or maybe Walter, or Winter. It looks like if you said that the city has no use for this property, and you have that whole parcel that goes all the way to this, both corners, on Cabell Street as well as Rivermont Avenue, rather than kind of having some kind of agreement, like this permit is, was there any consideration of selling this entire parcel rather than keeping the parcel? And you just stated that the city has no use of it. Is there a way to sell it rather than actually, than it's by deed?
Yes, sir. So we did look into that. The, so the front half of the parcel, the parcel was gifted to the city, I want to say it was in 1993, and I believe it was with the specific intention that the parcel be used as a park, the front portion. So it's kind of a little parklet that's up there. The only way we would be able to do it would be to split the parcel, which would then open it up to a bidding process. We could not sell it just to Mr. Wilson. So any of the neighbors could bid on it. If one of the neighbors did so and outbid him, then he would still be in the position of having to remove the encroachments, which is what we were kind of trying to avoid in the first place, since it didn't seem to cause any harm.
Yeah, it just seemed like a cleaner way would be to sell it, but, because this is kind of a rarity, I imagine. I don't know if we've ever done something like this, you know?
Well, you all see it in different forms sometimes. Usually, we do these by franchise ordinances for encroachments, but because of the nature of this, because it involved a pool and some other things that could potentially expose the city to liability, Public Works and our office have worked together with the citizen to come to the agreement, to be able to do a license agreement versus a simple letter to ensure that the properties insured were covered under it, as well as indemnification rights.
And so if you were to sell it, you wouldn't have to do any of that, right?
That's correct. But the process, the process we go through to sell the properties, we post it for purchase, so it would not prohibit other citizens from coming forward and outbidding the individual that we would want to sell it to, because we still have to follow that process and giving everyone a fair chance to be able to purchase it.
So somebody's going to bid on the property that's, half of it's underneath this pool. I just think a cleaner way is to, rather than granting special exemptions, is to just sell the property. So, you know, I recognize it may not be the end goal, but I got a feeling he's going to be the only bidder, but, and if not, if he wants that property to be able to keep his driveway and pool, and then you're actually selling a public asset that's owned by the taxpayers, as opposed to gifting to an individual. So it just seems strange, but...
Vice Mayor Feraldi.
I have curiosity. Would this license follow the property or the individual?
It would follow the property. So one, assuming council adopted this resolution, we would put it of record in the clerk's office to make clear that if the property was ever conveyed, it would follow that individual. The licensee that would receive this license is also aware of that, that it would be subject to...
So to be clear, this goes along with the deed to the property. This goes along with the...
The land.
The land. This is not just following an individual.
Yes, sir. That's moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you want to speak to him? Dr. Wilder, do you want to speak to him? Okay. Any other discussion?
This is a, is a solution, and I don't think it's the best solution, but, you know, not having any other thing, I don't think this is a habit that we should probably be getting into. We should be figuring out how to sell property rather than just figuring out how to convey something to one individual, but...
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Consideration of adopting a resolution amending the future land use map and adopting an ordinance changing a certain area located at 759 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential to B5C General Business District. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Rachel Freshley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Central Health Inc. is petitioning to rezone approximately 2,4700 acres located at 759 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential to B5C General Business District, conditional, and to amend the future land use map from Low Density Residential to Community Commercial. The subject property is approximately 16 acres total, of which the 2,4700 acres are located within the city. The portion within Campbell County is zoned for general commercial use and recommended for urban development area commercial on the county's future land use map. The proposed rezoning and flume amendment within the city would allow construction of an entrance and parking area to serve the rehabilitation facility, which is there, that is to be built on the portion within the county. Voluntarily submitted proffers should adequately limit impacts from the proposed development. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition with the proffers on August 23rd. City Council received a business item briefing about this item on September 12th, and there was some conversation about whether this could be accomplished with a CUP or a lower commercial district. Would that be adequate? Staff discussed this in turn...
I have curiosity, would this license follow the property or the individual?
It would follow the property. So one, assuming council adopted this resolution, we would put it of record in the clerk's office to make clear that if the property was ever conveyed, it would follow that individual. The licensee that would receive this license is also aware of that, that it would be subject to...
So to be clear, this goes along with the deed to the property? This goes along with the...
The land.
The land. This is not just following an individual?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you want to speak to him? Dr. Wilder, do you want to speak to him? Okay. Any other discussion? Vice Mayor, I mean, sorry.
This is a, is a solution, and I don't think it's the best solution, but, you know, not having any other thing, I don't think this is a habit that we should probably be getting into. We should be figuring out how to sell property rather than just figuring out how to convey something to one individual, but...
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Consideration of adopting a resolution amending the future land use map and adopting an ordinance changing a certain area located at 759 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential to B5 C General Business District. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests, Ms. Rachel Freshaisen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Centra Health, Inc. is petitioning to rezone approximately 2,470 acres located at 759 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential to B5 C General Business District Conditional and to amend the future land use map from Low Density Residential to Community Commercial. The subject property is approximately 16 acres total, of which the 2,470 acres are located within the city. The portion within Campbell County is zoned for general commercial use and recommended for urban development area commercial on the county's future land use map. The proposed rezoning and flume amendment within the city would allow construction of an entrance and parking area to serve the rehabilitation facility, which is there, that is, to be built on the portion within the county. Voluntarily submitted proffers should adequately limit impacts from the proposed development. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition with the proffers on August 23rd. City Council received a business item briefing about this item on September 12th, and there was some conversation about whether this could be accomplished with a CUP or a lower commercial district. Would that be adequate? Staff discussed this internally with city attorney and with the project team. Since a CUP would be needed in any district below the B5, the item would be required to go back to the Planning Commission prior to being considered by city council. The petitioner has decided to move forward with the rezoning as originally proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll call you back up if you have any questions, or you can stay there if you want, it's up to you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Brad Lipsy. I'm a current engineer representing Centra Health and the project. Just, I'm here basically to, in support of the project, to answer any questions you may have about the site itself and, like I said, here as needed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Dwight Williams, 200 Wexford Place, new citizen here in Wayne's, or here, from Waynesboro here in Lynchburg, love the city and think you all are doing a great job so far. So, I'm not always speaking out in opposition or in support. I live directly across the street from where the proposed rezonings take place. And my only concern is, I hope you all have considered what the traffic situation may look like when that building goes in, if it's going in as proposed. I have two children who tend to stand on Leesville Road waiting for their school bus in the morning, they are dropped off at night. I know that there are other families that have the exact same thing, and so my concern is our kids' safety. Not opposed or for additional medical facility. I know there probably is a need for one, but our kids' safety does come first. And so I would ask that before you make your decision, if you haven't already, that you consider what traffic congestion may look like should that development go in. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, any calls from citizens?
There are none.
Was there a rebuttal of sorts to talk about the traffic issue potentially?
Yeah, just want to know, we did do a traffic study and address the traffic. You'll see that the primary entrance for the rehab hospital is off of Leesburg there.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Vice Mayor Fralde?
Do I have approval?
Do I have a second?
Just, I got disclosure before...
Go ahead.
So, my spouse works for Centra Health, and I'm a member of a group, spouses of Centra Health, and I can look at this, since I'm a member of a group, I can look at this fairly and objectively and impartially.
Thank you. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Fralde? Did you want to speak to your master? No? Councilman Taylor, did you want to speak? No? Any other discussion or questions?
No.
Councilman Hugson?
Thank you. I'll be voting against this proposal. As Rachel discussed, the easy thing would have been to do a conditional use permit. This is the lowest-density, single-family R1 zoning. So going from an R1 zone, the least restrictive, the least intensive use of the property, to just leapfrog into the most extensive and most impactful use of the property, a highly congested, the most, highly available for traffic and whatnot, a B5, a Business Zone 5. Granted, there's some proffers here of things that they're not going to do. The original inference was that this is just going to be a parking lot for other facilities. But when you have a B5 zoning, you're next to houses, you're next to townhomes across the street. Leesville Road has had lots of congestion and more traffic and more density on the other end of the, of Leesville Road closer to Timberlake. When you look at this, it's going to set a terrible precedence that anybody else that's coming in to then say, oh, this was R1, now it's B5. So the next property, somebody can say, well, instead of R1, we want to put high-density apartments in there. And then the other end, we want to have all sorts of other things. And as the gentleman stated about the traffic, that only gets worse because it has a tendency to snowball. When you rezone one element, you don't, it has an impact on the adjacent properties. And so I wish we would consider this, and I wish we would allow this to go back to the Planning Commission, so they could then get a conditional use permit as opposed to rezoning it, so they could still go and build their parking lot like they wanted, rather than now not just impacting this particular property out of expedience, rather than going back to the Planning Commission and doing it today. They could take a little more time, do it appropriately, and ask for a conditional use permit to just have that parking, and it'd be no problem. But doing this, I think it's a bad precedence for the citizens that live on Leesville Road, the citizens that have owned individual homes, single-family R1 for lots of years, and I will be voting against this proposal.
Vice Mayor Fralde?
I think, I think the councilman raises very good points, and there's a few things I think we need to consider, though, with a more holistic approach. If we could pull up the picture of the development, the map, that'd be helpful. Actually, that one works. That one works. Thank you. So, the map on the left shows what is city property, the ones that have color. And the ones that are of, more of a satellite picture, are of the county. And so what makes this situation unique is how the development, as I understand, has already been approved by Campbell County. The building is coming, the impact is coming. Without having the developer and Centra come back up and explain a little bit more, there seems to be an access road that if this is not approved, all of that is going to be turned into there and cause more problems. And so I see this as a solution to a problem rather than necessarily causing more issues. We can't stop the development from coming. I mean, it's in another jurisdiction. So by my eyes, is this the best thing? No, it's, it's, it's not. I think Councilman Hugson raises very fair points. And yet, at the same token, we need to be able to work with our large employers and, and show that we are for development, that we support what they need. And because this, I see this as a partnership between Campbell County and the city of Lynchburg, I think this is an opportunity for that. I would ask a question. I could be wrong on this. Do conditional use permits expire? Can they?
I think if, if there's an expiration put on it, if you were to make it a condition, that would expire, but typically they would not, would they?
A CUP expires when, after 20 more, 24 months, if a final site plan application has not been made, then it would expire.
So, in other words, because a CUP would expire, it behooves the developer to say in actuality what they want from a zoning request rather than coming up with some agreement that may or may not actually work its way out? Does that make sense?
I think I understand what you're saying. A CUP is more limiting. So if they submit the plan with the parking lot, that's the condition, it's got to look like that. If they ended up needing a little parking on the other side, or if the building needed to shift and maybe it was encroaching into the city, while the use on the parcel is still the same, it's not going to match the conditional use permit concept plan, which may need to come back to city council again if, if they had to revise it.
Yeah, so ultimately, I do agree with the councilman. I'd humbly submit that there are opportunities here for us to find a solution and work with the developer, who happens to be one of the largest employers in the region, that we want them to grow, we want them to serve the southern end of the city, and that we're willing to work with Campbell County with the property that we have jurisdiction over to do it.
Councilman Hugson, do you have a comment? I know, you've seen your finger up before.
Oh, I think it was...
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good right now.
Okay. Councilman Hugson?
So I guess just, I think she was answering it, but the conditional use permit, I think as Mr. Martin was saying, is it doesn't expire. So the only expiration would be if they submit, and a CUP is granted, and they decide not to build on it for two years. Then it would lapse because it wasn't being utilized. And if it's, if we're concerned about having it lapse for two years, then having an extra, you know, meeting in two weeks for the Planning Commission to come back, I don't think it changes the timeframe. I mean, you're looking at a few weeks to go back to Planning Commission with the CUP. It doesn't lapse. Now, a CUP could be revoked, which I think in my whole timeframe, and Mr. Martin probably as well, there's been one that had been revoked because it was, I think it was the Allied Sandwich Shop, because it was just detriment to the neighborhood, beer bottles, drunkenness, and all that kind of stuff happening in other neighborhoods. But I don't think this CUP would be revoked, and if we're worried about them not building on it for two years... Maybe you can answer that question, the Centra Health. Is, is this not going to be built on for two years?
Well, the portion that we're going to build is part of the first phase of rehab hospital is plant construction, you know, is the first phase. The behavioral hospital on the other side, we have received a state certificate of need for the beds, which sorely needed in the area. We're still working through the, the conceptual designs and the exact implementation of that facility, so I don't have a specific timeframe when we would actually start construction. But the idea is that we would start as soon as reasonably possible. Whether that's 24 months or not, you know, I couldn't say for sure.
And so, and I think with that, we've granted extensions on conditional use permits if you're, if the two years is there. So it's not necessarily a rush that you're starting construction tomorrow, so we have to do this today and rezone this whole property as opposed to getting a conditional use permit that would have to, I think, as Ms. Freshaisen said, is have to go back to Planning Commission for another meeting and then come back and pass unanimously?
Well, I think the, the purpose of the rezoning was, was first of all, with B5, that was the only zone that would allow for a hospital. And I think that the goal here would be to come up with a strategy that allowed us to develop the property in the future, but might not be tied to a specific type, site plan that would require us to come back for approval under a CUP. So I think that with the proffers, we've severely limited what we can and can't do with that under the B5 zoning, and we just felt that that was the, you know, the most appropriate way to achieve what we need to achieve based on the, on the development that we're proposing.
But I don't think a conditional use permit would require like a proffered site plan. Doesn't have to say it has to, that doesn't have to be one of the conditions that you have to do the site plan. So I think we could still do this fairly easily. It wouldn't impact the neighborhood for a long period of time, because it's, you know, you look at this map, everybody around there, obviously Campbell County, that's brand-new land that has never been developed until now, but all in front of it is all single-family R1 zoning. And I just, I don't think that's a good use for the neighborhood. I appreciate your expansion, I appreciate what Centra Health does, but this is, this is a single-family neighborhood. So I just, I hope we'll consider maybe even tabling this until we can actually recognize if a CUP could even work. It doesn't sound like there's a pressing need to get it done where you're turning dirt over next week. So, that would be my thoughts.
Vice Mayor?
Excuse me, my bad, bro. My name's Roger Bradley. I'm the vice president of facilities and design and construction at Centra Health. We are under a time consideration. So we did, we did get, receive a certificate of need, and in the certificate of need, we have a certain amount of time to turn over the project, and so we've been limited as far as the amount of time. Some of the issues that we are currently having is, of course, we do not show parking on the piece of property where we have received the certificate of need, and that's for our rehabilitation hospital. At this point in time, we really don't know if there's a need for additional parking. Again, the amount of work that we're going to be doing on that property is very limited, but with the amount of money that we have to spend, we have to obtain the permit. So in order to get the permit and keep everything under the same zoning, you know, we're trying to keep everything consistent. So we went through and listed a proffer of anything that would be detrimental to the, to the homeowners association and the surrounding properties, really with the intent to make sure that we were just capable of doing the project and having some economic benefit to the city besides the county, because, you know, this is a taxable property, just like the property, our medical office building. So it does provide a benefit to the city. But the same token is, we really do not plan on encroaching, but we're not sure. We only have a certain amount of time. We have less than 24 months, and really, we're down on a restriction as far as trying to get this thing under construction before the weather sets in. So we do have a restriction.
And too, so you can understand it as well, is when we look at the map up there, it's not as even as much, I think staff has explained it enough as far as what you're going to be actually using with this property. The problem is all this R1 property that's now adjacent, is everybody can come in because you can't do spot zoning. And they're going to say, look at, you got this high-intensive business use here, and so instead of being a single-family neighborhood, we want this to be high-density, or we want another business because it's going to kind of like a snowball, so...
And understanding, and I think that that's why we put in the proffer, was to make sure that we did make it difficult for people in the future. You know, we, we've tried to outline everything possible, but again, our consideration was how to do this quickly and how to fall on the same principles of the permit and the use that we're using with the county. So we tried to do the best method, and, and again, you know, we did look at the, you know, the possibility of taking this down to a B1 even, but the problem is that we still have to go through and get the certificate of need with that as well. So that's why we concluded that the best, our best opportunity was for the B5.
So the certificate of need from the state?
No, sir, I'm sorry. We would have to get a conditional use permit even with the B1.
Okay.
So that's, that's the issue. Had we not, we were, we would have gone back for a B1.
So we could have done a B1 with the conditional use permit. At least that would have been less intensive use as a business use as opposed to the most intensive, so...
Exactly, but we would still have to have gone back and get the certificate, or the, the CUP.
Vice Mayor Fralde?
Last of my colleagues have anything else they would like to offer? I also, just for reference, I see this more as a parody to the current lot that's going to be developed across the way in Campbell as to what we have here. And ultimately, there is a need, and no one understands the traffic and neighborhood situation like my colleague. And I've certainly learned myself how the southern end of town feels about development. And if there's anyone in this room who needs to hear that, it's someone like Centra coming in to do something. And if there's any industry in the area, I think Centra certainly meets the muster about knowing the nature of the community they're going into and what, what the precedent is there and what the neighbors would be wanting and not wanting. So for that reason, I'm, I am supporting the, for those reasons, I'm supporting the motion.
Transmissions?
What would be the impact if we did kick it back to the Planning Commission to go after a CUP to the project as it stands right now?
I think probably what we would do is we'd probably change the drawing to incorporate to have full parking of the property to make sure that we wouldn't have to come back in the 24-month period, or after the 24 months.
And what, I guess, what hurdles would that present to the project and to...
Probably just the time constraint to have to go back and redo the drawings and go through the entire process over again.
I guess what would be the, what would be the impact of that time constraint?
The time constraint...
What's the timeline look like for that?
Possibly it could impede us getting done in the time period that we've been given for the certificate of need. So we are pushing with a deadline.
Because totally understand both sides of the argument here. That's actually in my backyard.
And when we heard the argument, we did go back and try to revisit it. So we did take it very serious. And again, I think you'll see that, you know, we're trying to be very good neighbors. You'll see what we're doing with the medical office building, tying into the trail system and trying to enhance, you know, our community through trying to work together with the city, so...
And, you know, like I said, my concern is... And, and, you know, like I said, my concern is, is other developers coming in and saying, hey, you did B five there, we want B five here. So, and I just don't think that that would be in good harmony with, with the single family residential that, that is there.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Motion passes, five to.
Okay. Moving on to public comment. The next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before city council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. I think we will start with our youngest speaker in the room tonight, Adeline Robertson, who's here to speak on the proposed closure of Sandusky Elementary School.
I don't want my school to shut down because there's nice teachers, I have nice friends, and we have a nice principal, and Sandusky is my home.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from a citizen regarding closing of Derrington and TC Miller schools and consider a precinct in Ward Two, Mr. Robert Flood. Please restate your name and locality residence.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and all the representatives. Speaking behind the rescues of the youth, that's my organization, about the schools, not only Derrington, but TC Miller and Sandusky. We had a program, I think, a committee got together about building some different projects over in Derrington that cost $500,000 with methon gas under the ground, that we don't know where it's at today, but we still continue to follow through the bill, something on top of that. And we spent $500, $500,000, but we cannot fix the schools that need to be fixed, but we can spend that kind of money. And one of the other things, I know the police, they got their hands full, they short. We got three unsolved murders that I know of that we need to be focused on that, other than trying to close down schools where these kids are enjoying themselves and getting a lesson, a good lesson, positive. But we can spend money on place over, places over in Derrington, and I think y'all approved it, for them to go forward when methon gas is still under the ground. And it comes up, I think it's like 5.2 the last time we was here. And I think Mr. Jeff, he has spoke about it because I think he know the numbers a little bit better. And I got some paperwork. But why can't we just, this is like when a house is falling down, we call somebody to repair, right? We don't tear it down. So why are we talking about turning down or at least closing these schools like TC Miller, Derrington, now Sandusky? Why? We playing politics. That's all it is. We bring somebody in to survey, to tell us that we have to close it down, and we don't have nobody in Lynchburg to do that? I don't understand that. We build a school over there near Heritage on sinking ground. We spent millions of dollars, but we didn't know it was sinking. But all of a sudden, then we build a brand new school. And that costs millions of dollars. But we got schools that's falling down, but we want to close them down instead of fixing them up. I don't understand that. And each one of y'all was elected for certain reasons, for the people, not for yourselves. We don't have a grocery store yet in White Rock Hill. Mr. Taylor, that's what he campaigned on, you know? We don't have one yet. But these are things that, that's more important than trying to close down these schools that these kids need because they're right in the neighborhoods. But all of a sudden, let's close them down instead of fixing them up. Now, one other thing before I leave, we're not, and we haven't been speaking about the precinct that I asked for over in Ward Two. What's wrong with that? Because everything closed down, y'all ain't hear nobody getting shot, killed, right now everything quiet? Don't think it'll stay quiet. But why can't we build a precinct in all those houses over there in Ward Two that's being tore down? Why can't we build a precinct right there to have four or five cops to get to know the community? Why we can't do that? Why can't, the officers can't walk out in the community and get to know the people like they used to do, walk the beat? That's how you get to know each other. That's how you establish a bond. But if you sit back and don't do nothing, then all of a sudden something happen, you want to march, you want to talk about, but somebody lost their lives. And you use that for personal gain. That's what people do. We got a little kid's picture on the store, $47,000 worth of reward. His life was worth $47,000, well, it should have been $20,000 or more. Thank y'all. We need to do something better.
Thank you. Well, now I'm here from a group representative regarding thanking the city and presenting the mayor with a T-shirt from the tournament, National Invitation Tournament, Mr. Andrew Dooley from the USA Softball of Piedmont, Virginia. Is he outside? Wait one second, I think. No? Okay, moving on. We will now hear from a citizen regarding the state of the Republican Party in Lynchburg, Mr. Gary Taylor.
I'm speaking for a group.
You're speaking for a group?
Yes. I'm speaking for a new group formed, Citizens for a Better Lynchburg. Citizens for a Better Lynchburg. So, good evening. Madam Mayor Reed, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Attorney, Mrs., make sure I get this right, Madam Municipal Maven Finney, is I think what they would call you today, and Mr. City Manager and his very competent and professional staff. So I'm gonna say that one more time for two council members up here. The very competent and professional city staff, okay? Believe we all know each other, okay? Over the last decade, I think we've all know that we've done our best to make Sit Lynchburg a great place to work, play, and live. My name is Gary Taylor. I formerly resided in the Windhurst subdivision, where I was the de facto mayor of the Windhurst community. Now I live in Bedford County, in a suburb of Good, which allows me to see two very politically diverse groups. So that helps with understanding both situations. So I want to address the Republican Party, and I want to do that through this DEI resolution. So tonight, we celebrate, or not celebrate, the three-month anniversary of a time and resource-wasting, politically motivated bogus DEI resolution brought forward by council member Missions, three months wasted on a pure political action. This is just the latest type of misuse of power. This council member is a serious liability to the entire city council, the city Republicans, and the city of Lynchburg. Council member Taylor had to spend time recently bringing this up during a roll call at a council work session, so deputy city manager Patrick could bring up the fact that the city is already Now, the Lynchburg Republican City Committee, the LRCC, has nominated themselves as the de facto eighth member of city council. I guess Mr. Friedman will have to look into that to how the LRCC is now part of city council. So last week, they passed a resolution that has already been put to bed to force city Republicans to support this bogus resolution. It's shameful, is what it is. So while DEI is the latest scandal involving council member Missions, he has a long and distinguished history of bad behavior in just nine months. Has 100% failure rate on resolution process. Has 100% rate of blaming others for his failures. Has repeatedly spread false and misleading information regarding Mayor Reed. Woo! Has repeatedly attacked and made unfounded derogatory remarks towards other council members, city staff, and city leadership. Now he is trashing the Lynchburg police leadership. Harassed city employee John Hughes for his right to wear whatever he wants to. Is there anybody he hasn't alienated, trashed, lied about, or spread misinformation? With regards to council member Helgason, the longest-tenured Republican member, he's repeatedly made derogatory and false comments about the city manager and the city attorney at various meetings. In January, he tried to get the city manager to illegally issue real estate rebate checks. He's a leader in cutting funding for local schools. The LRCC is a small tent.
Thank you.
My conclusion is.
Thank you very much.
Ask for his council members, Missions, and Helgason to resign effective immediately.
Thank you.
And the LRCC to give up its charter. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from a group representative regarding Lynchburg City School Board's recommendation to close Sandusky Elementary School, Tiresha Royal. If I said it wrong, please correct me when I, I said it right? Yay, good. Okay. She's from the Sandusky Elementary PTO.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
I can't, yes, go ahead. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Tiresha Royal, President of the Sandusky Parent Teacher Organization, and I'm here representing the Sandusky community. We are here today to respond to the plan for closure of Sandusky Elementary School. Our community stands in opposition to the proposed decision, and we respectfully request a public hearing to discuss the school board recommendation prior to formal voting. The public hearing should be held at Sandusky Elementary School and will afford the community an opportunity to continue its parental and public engagement and dialogue regarding the board's decision. The following significant factors influence the Sandusky community opposition. Over 1,000 new apartments are being added in the Sandusky School District near Graves Mill Road. According to the scenario that was passed, Sandusky students would go to Heritage, Sheffield, and Paramount Schools. Adding all open spaces from those schools together only equals 143 students, leaving 243 students in addition to the students that will be coming next year from the new apartment buildings currently being built with nowhere to go. Sandusky is also ranked number three in Lynchburg City Schools and is the fifth-largest elementary school. 70% of the Sandusky community voted against scenario three, which would included the closure of Sandusky Elementary School. The plan most Sandusky parents chose was number one, that appeared to affect the least number of elementary school kids, as it involved closing the alternative school and converting only one elementary school. The pandemic has also affected our kids physically and mentally, and the closure of their school would not be beneficial to them. Teachers at Sandusky Elementary are experienced educators, with almost 90% of them having three or more years of teaching experience. Sandusky students scored higher than the district average in both reading and math despite a higher student-to-teacher ratio. Our ratio is 16 to one compared to the ratios from other elementary schools. Lincoln is 15 to one, Bass is 14 to one, Robert S. Payne and Bedford Hills Elementary are 13 to one. There is also an existing rebuilding plan prepared and ready to be used for Sandusky Elementary, which was voted on by the Lynchburg City School Board in November of 2020. Enrollment has also not declined in Sandusky. It was less than 1% during the last school year. The elementary school enrollment will slowly increase after 2023, 2024 school year, but this is not to be perceived as a long-term trend. The enrollment will increase by 7.8% or 290 students by the 2031, 2032 school year. So we will continue to need more space for our children, not less. We thank the council for this opportunity and request a scheduled public hearing to address these and other factors influencing the closure decision. The Sandusky community has demonstrated its continuous success in helping all of our schools prepare students for college, career, and citizenship through a continuous, effective school-community partnership that supports and enriches our students. Our community is a model that reflects such public and parental engagement that is most often correlated with improved test scores and grades and low, and later, lower dropout rates and higher graduation rates. These are essential factors of a thriving community, and closure of this essential school impacts this overall community at large and the future success of its citizens. We urge your support, we urge your support of this important request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from a citizen regarding the topic of continued disunity among the Republican council members, Beth White. Please restate your name and locality residence.
Y'all should know it in my heart by now.
I know.
Beth White, Ward Three. Before I begin, if you have not had the chance to see today's news in advance, I want to encourage you, outstanding article on your secret weapon, Madam Clerk. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. Dr. Wilder, Ms. Dolan, if you would indulge me for a few minutes while I address your colleagues. You see, there are continuing reports in the news media regarding the constant infighting among local Republicans. In a story dated September 21st, Cardinal News explained in detail the timeline of the constant bickering that has been witnessed by our citizens since last November's election. There was also a mention of the phone call between then-councilman Feraldi and Congressman Bob Good, in which the congressman basically tries to order the now vice mayor on who to vote for for mayor, and then cautions him to, quote, "Think long and hard about what you're doing," unquote. Now, Bob is a friend. I know a lot of his personal family, their friends. But it would behoove the congressman to pay more attention to Washington and not tell members of Lynchburg City Council how to run our city or who to vote for. That brings me to the case in point and the reason for me speaking tonight. Last week, as Mr. Taylor already alluded to, the Lynchburg Republican City Committee voted to, quote, "direct," unquote, the five Republican council members to support Councilman Missions' MEO resolution. The original language states that, quote, "This Republican unit directs Republican council members Feraldi, Helgason, Missions, Reed, and Taylor to defend Republican values that won decisively in November 2022 by going on offense against the progressive agenda and advancing Lynchburg as a sanctuary for conservatism and constitutional governance by enacting the resolution to promote merit, excellence, and opportunity in city government this calendar year," unquote. The statement was then updated to change the word "directs" to "urges," but the point is still the same. When award-winning actress Jamie Lee Curtis won her Oscar in March of this year, one of the first things that she said on stage was, quote, "I may look like I'm standing here alone, but I am not, for I am hundreds of people." Hundreds, unquote. I want to echo her words to you. I may look like I'm standing here alone, but I am not. I may look like I'm standing here alone, but I am not, for I represent hundreds of Lynchburg citizens who are tired of the political circus. To the members of the Lynchburg City Committee, the Lynchburg Republican City Committee, you were not elected by our citizens. You do not have the right to direct, urge, or order our councilmembers to bat your wishes. Members of council, please, I'm begging you, if you love this city as much as you claim, and I know you do, otherwise you would not serve, then stop acting like a bunch of two-year-olds on social media.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We will now hear from a citizen regarding Lynchburg City Schools, Colleen Larkins.
I live in Ward Four. I'm Colleen Larkins. My kids have attended Lynchburg City Schools for 10 years. We want to ask the City Council to hold our school board accountable for making a plan without a plan. This has not been pen to paper. They do not know what they're going to do with our children, and these kids, these faces, they deserve better than that. They deserve a school like they have now that loves and cares for them. And I could tell you a million reasons why these people are worth saving, but I'm going to let my son, he's 10 years old, share with you.
Hello. My name is Kevin Larkins, and I'm a fifth grader at Sandusky Elementary. For many years, Mr. Womack has told us, "We do it better when we do it together." Every time I hear that, it makes me feel like I'm not alone. And if you closed down the school, we won't be able to hear his encouraging voice anymore. That is just one of the many reasons I love Sandusky. My teachers challenge me to discover new things, like Mrs. Lewis does in depth. They are always there to help me when I need it. My gym class with Miss Smith is the most fun I have all day. Sandusky Elementary is more than just a school. It is a place where I and other students come to learn and grow. Closing Sandusky Elementary would hurt our students, our families, and our entire community. I am asking you to please vote against closing Sandusky Elementary. I've been lucky enough to do it better for the last five years because I've been at Sandusky. Please help us continue to do it together for the next 50.
We'll now hear from a citizen regarding saving Sandusky Elementary School from being closed, Cynthia Cax.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. That's a very hard act to follow. Let me begin by saying that I stand here as a proud member of the Sandusky family. I am a former part of the Title I Teaching Team at Sandusky Elementary. I still consider Sandusky Elementary my home. After attending community meetings and reading scenarios, an overwhelming 70% of parents, staff, and community members selected Option or Scenario One, but our collective voice was ignored. The community has had zero voice in this decision. Sandusky Elementary was never given the opportunity to speak and share the impact that the board's choice would have on these children and on our community. Council, there is no plan in place. The board voted on Scenario Three with no plan for execution. They are throwing the education of these children, the staff's livelihood, and our deep-rooted school community to the wind by simply saying, "We will figure it out." No. People's lives are hanging in the balance. Closing buildings before finalizing rezoning is foolishly poor planning on the board's part, and this is unacceptable. All LCS students deserve and need consistency of learning and educational support. These children have lived through a pandemic, and the true effect on them is not known at this point. There were achievement gaps and learning loss in place before the pandemic, and further disrupting the education of these children will make things even harder for them. If you closed the school, there will still be costs that are incurred. Will it be demolished? Will it be maintained? An abandoned building zoned as a school in a neighborhood will diminish property values. The fallout will affect actual people. A board member visited our school six weeks ago on the first day of school and told staff members at our school that our school was not on the list of schools to be closed and that our four walls, four walls, would be getting improvements, mentioning a new roof for our building. My question is this: What happened in six weeks? I'm curious why a school operating at capacity is being considered for closure while a school dedicating four classrooms to an eight-student program is being considered for $15 million in renovations. Sandusky Elementary is not just four walls. Sandusky Elementary has enriched our student and staff population. Our school is the only safe place or home that some of our students know. It offers consistency and a place for our students to excel. Sandusky has a low turnover rate, both in staff and students, high morale, and strong teamwork. Our school is led by an African-American male who is a strong and positive role model in our community, and that is essential in this community. Council, we are asking you to vote no to this proposal and this request for $15 million in renovation to Bass. Hold the school board accountable to the folks that they are supposed to serve. LCS parents, school staff, and community voice has been ignored for far too long. We were asked for our choice, and we gave it, and it's being ignored. The time has come for the community and Sandusky Elementary to be heard. Council, you cannot both uphold this action by the school board
Thank you.
and say that you support parental input in your children's education.
Thank you very much.
You told us parental input was going to be a priority. Your constituents are listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Hold yourselves accountable.
Thank you. Thank you. I know you all are emotional and passionate, but please refrain from applauding. Okay? Thank you. All right. We will now hear from a citizen regarding Page 116 of the fiscal year 23 budget, Mr. Marty Mishkins.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Marty Mishkins is living in Ward Three, voted for four of you, including myself, which is a little weird. But, you know, seeing this room tonight has kind of changed the direction of what I wanted to address. The reality is, we just had the Vice Mayor get up and leave the room when he's being addressed by a citizen. That's unfortunate. But the concern that I have is I don't think school administration has what it takes to properly implement this plan. I have zero faith in the administration of our public schools to get this done. Decisions have to be made, and there's things that we need to do. And we were the ones that were elected, and we were the ones that were appointed, that appointed the school board. And the last time we got together in a joint meeting, we were walked around by staff members. There was very little dialogue between the council and the board members. We did charrettes, where they put a staff member in place to speak on behalf of the governing bodies, and there was very little dialogue between the two governing bodies. They've got it right. We do it better when we do it together. The answer to this is a joint meeting with the school board and the city council, sooner rather than later. That's the answer, where we actually have dialogue, where we actually walk through different ideas and scenarios and plans on how to implement whatever is ahead of us, because the decision does have to be made. But we need to work together with the school board to ensure that we make the decision that serves the individuals, families, and businesses in our community the best and provides the absolute best academic experience for the children of our city. That's the reality. I don't know about you guys, but I'm not satisfied with leaving it up to staff. We need to meet with the school board and walk through these issues.
Thank you. We will now hear from a group representative regarding allied... Oh, he's not here. Is Mr. Thomas not here?
Double X.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right. I believe that concludes our public comment.
Madam.
Yeah, he's not here.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry? Someone just called my name?
Is it 19? I'm sorry. Oh, she interrupted me. I'm sorry.
All right. So if Mr. Thomas is not here, then we will move on to general business. The next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Consideration of adopting an ordinance vacating a public easement lying between 1504 Elm Street, 1500 Main Street, and 1520 Main Street. This item was presented to council during our July 11th public hearing. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council, Andy Maddox of Maine LLC is petitioning to vacate an easement for public right-of-way on a portion of Elm Street. The purpose of the petition is to allow the installation of parking for the continued expansion of the Wayne, which is a buy-right development that consists of condo units and amenities. The area to be vacated currently contains a paved road that serves the adjoining lots. To ensure continued access, a public bluff-walk pedestrian easement and public access easement have been established. This petition was previously tabled as a public hearing item at the July 11th council meeting. Since then, Mr. Maddox has been working on an agreement with the neighbors...
Ms. Mergenthaler, let me interrupt you for a second. I'm just going to let everybody get out of the room, that's going to lead, get out of the room so we can pay attention to your briefing, okay? Just a minute. If everyone could just be quiet as you're exiting the room so we continue the meeting, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay. Go ahead.
All right.
Sorry about that.
This petition was previously tabled as a public hearing item at the July 11th council meeting. Since then, Mr. Maddox has been working on an agreement with the neighbors and plans to install signs prohibiting entry onto Pearl Street from Elm Street. These signs will require tenants to exit the development at the stoplight on Main Street. The Physical Development Committee also reviewed the petition at their September 12th meeting and recommended approval.
Okay. All right. This item went to our Physical Development Committee on September 12th, and I will defer to the Chair of that committee, Councilman Taylor. Did you want to have anything to say about it?
Yes, Mr. Maddox.
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't hear you.
Yes, sir. At our previous Physical Development Committee meeting...
Yes, sir.
We know that you got in touch with all your neighbors roundabout. You are in agreement with your neighbors to take care of some of the items that...
Yes, sir. I met with the cleaning company, the veterinarians across the street, and even the antique store across Main Street, and explained what we were proposing to do, and we actually went as far as trying to do some improvements on their side, too, along with adding the "do not exit" from Elm to Pearl. And we'll even put that in their leases with our tenants.
Yes.
Yes, sir. And they've agreed, and we've prepared letters, and I think it's in your package also.
So, Mr. Taylor, all you need to do is make a motion. This does not require a second unless there's any other further questions here.
I make a motion that we approve this.
Yes, sir.
And that you go ahead with your plans.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any additional discussion? Councilman Hodgson.
The motion came to the Physical Development Committee.
Yes. It doesn't require a second. That's correct. Correct.
And so with that, I met with Mr. Maddox after, which basically, what we did when we tabled this, he then, you know, sometimes people look at that as like, oh my goodness, this is a death kneller. But Mr. Maddox actually picked up the ball and ran with it. He actually figured out a better solution and a better strategy, and actually presented to. Some of it wasn't much of a change. It was how it was articulated as far as what was happening. He met with me out on the property, showed me around, and I'm thankful for the leadership in the neighborhood and what you're doing in that area, and I'm voting in favor of this this time. So thank you very much.
Any other discussion, Congress? Council missions?
I just want to thank you, and I appreciate the way this whole process worked, you know, sitting up in this seat. Sometimes you've got to consider the impacts, you know, if we'd have killed it right then and there, it would have been done, and you would have had to start from scratch. We gave you, was it two more months, I think, to work it out with the neighbors, and it really... I walked through the property with you. We spent, I think it was a couple hours, it felt like, together and got to see the Jetson suite and all of that. And, you know, I really appreciate the work that you did, going hands-on with the people that had concerns and resolving those concerns, and just being a good, not only a good steward of your property, but a good neighbor to the adjacent parcels. And I just want to thank you for that, and I'll be voting to support this.
Dr. Wilder.
Yes, Emma, thank you for the steward of the facility and also really working with the neighbors, because that is so crucial of how you put hand in hand with the neighbors and making certain amenities to their properties, properties as well, of people like the dog park and some other things. So I want to commend you for that, and thank you for changing that landscape, because it definitely needed a makeover. So I appreciate it, especially for the interest into our city. I mean, it's truly a gateway, so it makes our city look so much better as you come off the Expressway of 29 into our city. So thank you for the development. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dolan.
Yeah, Mr. Maddox, I just wanted to thank you also for what you've done with that property, and I think you've not only considered the stuff that's happened to the physical plant, which is absolutely gorgeous, but you've also considered all the landscape around. And when you stand there and look at what you are doing and have done with some of those buildings, it's really fantastic. I will totally support this. Thank you. And also, crime reduction. I love your...
Which I was referring to, that's what Mayor James just stated, that's all I was going to say. I mean, that place, unbelievable, but I think, single-handedly, I think our Chief of Police should give you a badge for changing that, because I think crime rates went down probably about four or five points by the number of calls that were there. And now it's going to be people that own it, people that rent, people that, professionals that live in there and care about the area, rather than drug deals and prostitution and you name it, the things that used to happen there. So, thank you very much.
Dr. Wilder.
Just one other comment, but it's really to the city staff and I. One of my kids lives at a nice apartment in Richmond, and now, because we look at a lot of the renovations, the rent is really high, but he lives in a new development where it's kind of subsidized. I don't know what kind of program that is, but I wish we kind of looked into that to see, a lot of the problem is the rent is rather high, to see what we can do to offer a program like that, or what kind of program that is. I'll give you the address of that, just to see what they're doing in Richmond and how that might offset some things in Lynchburg, because I know the rent is rather challenging, and so all persons might not be able to afford those. So what we can do to make it more advantageous for all persons, just to see what program that is in Richmond, see how we can look into that. Thank you.
I'd be interested in that. Thank you guys for lowering taxes. That actually helps us to lower the rent some, so thank you.
Well, I just echo the sentiments of all, of all of the councilmembers. I mean, we've all just enjoyed so much getting to see the project. I will say, the night that you first presented, I was disappointed. I wanted to be able to support you that night, but I'm so glad that the two months that went by allowed for some really positive discussion with your neighbors. You exemplify what I want to see more of in the city, which is these people that are willing to collaborate, have conversations, work together, work things out. That is what we should all be willing to do as far as, you know, our businesses. And so I think you did a great job, and I mean, it's beautiful, it's a little oasis back there, and thank you for being so generous to the businesses around you, you know, giving them little facelifts as well, because that's a win-win for everybody. And again, could you just give, I would just like for the record, for you to state what the previous number of calls that used to be called approximately to what you've received recently for police assistance?
Sure. When we closed on the motel, it had to run another two months. As a motel, they had guests in there that they had to do a contract with. But, so I set up a temporary office there, and I was just trying to figure out what I was going to do with it, but I could just see drug deals going down day after day. So I reached out to the police department. I met her there. She, her name escapes me, but she's on...
Cindy.
Cindy. Yeah. So we met, and we had met before on some other projects, and she brought me the reports. She said, "The year preceding of us closing were 1,500 calls to 1,500 Main Street." And so she said, so we set the calendar for a year later, we met a year later, and she said, "Andy, you don't believe it's three calls." And we made two of them. So we certainly didn't lower crime, but we displaced it, in her words, but hopefully it's less concentrated.
And that's what it proves when you make your investment in cleaning up the area, what that does. So thank you so much, and I think we're all very excited about voting for this right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm just glad your address was 3,000 Main Street.
That's right.
That would have been 3,000.
Sorry. One second before we vote. Council missions?
Mr. Bennett just stepped out, so you can carry this. You guys need to sit down with him and talk about bluff-walk.
About what?
You guys need to sit down together and talk about bluff-walk, the conversation we had.
Yes, sir. Yeah. We're going to, I think what you're referring to, we're going to build a section of bluff-walk through ours, and I guess the plan was to connect that over time. We'd be glad to be a part of that, but we'll see what we can do. Be nice tied together. I live there, so it'd be closer for me to walk downtown, so it's self-serving.
Well, thank you so much. Let's go ahead and vote.
We'd be glad to be a part of that, but we'll see what we can do. Be nice to have it together. I live there, so it'd be closer for me to walk downtown, so it's self-serving.
Well, thank you so much. Just go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. All right, moving on to consideration of adopting a resolution endorsing the Virginia Department of Transportation grant funding applications. This item went to our Physical Development Committee on September 12th, and I will defer to the Chair of that committee, Councilmember Taylor. Again, you can make a motion out of the committee, Mr. Taylor, and it does not require a second. Do you want to be reminded by Mr....
Yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Every two years, the Virginia Department of Transportation opens up applications for revenue-sharing programs and also the TAP transportation alternative programs. This year, we are applying for funds for existing projects that are within our CIP. As for inflationary funds, due to the high inflation, the cost of them have gone up to this. These applications are to take care of those funds that are there. I can go over the projects if you want me to, or...
We voted by consent, right? To pass this.
Yes. So you just have to make the motion.
I make a motion that we vote on it and get it done.
As the Chair of PDC.
Yes.
Okay, does not require a second. Is there any other discussion or questions?
I just want to say, we're sitting through this, the presentation guys gave us was great. There's a lot of really important projects on here that are throughout the entire city. So I think that it's going to be great to apply for these grants and move forward on getting some of these important infrastructure projects done. Wards Ferry in Atlanta, that's a serious, serious issue right there, and that's going to be a huge, huge fix over there, because that is just an absolute nightmare. And then we've got the traffic roundabout coming at CBCC Campus Drive in Wards Ferry, too. That's going to be, I think that when we get these projects done, it's really going to transform that corridor. I know we talked earlier about the congestion up by the Copley Place Project. I think that those improvements right there are going to totally transform that corridor as far as safety is concerned, because of the high rate of speed, people just come through the middle of that thing. It's going to make a big difference.
Thank you for all your hard work, getting these funds to get these things taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, without no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay. The last item on our agenda is consideration of adopting a resolution designating Oddfellow's Road from US Route 46029 to the Lynchburg Expressway as the Senator Steve Newman Parkway. This item was presented to council during our business item briefings on September 12th, 2023. May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, so moved.
If I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead.
For those who are still sticking around, this is actually a very momentous occasion. We're going to be voting to take up an overlay for a part of town to commemorate one of Lynchburg's most successful and prestigious public servants, Senator Steve Newman. Regardless of your politics, it is impossible to deny the impact he's made in our city and our region, serving on City Council, in the House of Delegates, in the Virginia Senate, and even rising to the top spot as pro tempore of the Virginia State Senate. There's no... Nowhere in this town can you go without finding the fingerprints of Steve Newman to some capacity. And the fiscally responsible way to honor him, believe it or not, is to do it through this route. Oddfellow's Road is going to be a place that will be forever recognized as the Senator Steve Newman Parkway, and I couldn't think of a better way to honor him and his legacy, and I thank my colleagues for supporting it. I know the Senator wished he could be here tonight. He did inform me that he would not be able to attend, but he is certainly humbled by the gesture and would appreciate, well, I think he would appreciate our support as well. I do know there's been a desire to rename the bridge, and there's some procedures we have to do, go along with that, and I'm certainly open to renaming that as well, but overwhelmingly to my colleagues, I don't believe enough could be said about Senator Newman and his legacy for the city. And so with that in mind, I would ask my colleagues to vote yes.
Dr. Wilder.
I think Steve Newman has been very instrumental to our community, especially in the transportation area. So we're so thankful for his voice in that area of seeking more funds for our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Missions?
I can't think of somebody who's a bigger advocate for life to what an honor it is to name this Parkway after such a pro-life champion is incredible to me.
All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned then. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on October 10th, 2023, at 4:00 PM in Council Chamber.